Hi, good morning and welcome to the June 7th, 2017 Board of County Commissioners meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer. And you may be wondering why I'm wearing a blue tee shirt instead of a formal, more formal attire. But Sedgwick County, as part of our sponsorship for Riverfest this week, we are having an informational booth, we will be having, rather, an informational booth today at the Kennedy Plaza from 11:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m. today. First, we'll be over at the Kennedy Plaza Food Court, and then this afternoon, we will have a booth over closer to the Kennedy Plaza stage. You can check us out and learn more about Sedgwick County, talk to a few elected officials, and, and talk to us and learn more about our organization, how we can help you. Additionally, this afternoon, we will be on Riverfest Radio, KQAM, talking about what's going on at Sedgwick County. Then this afternoon, you can follow up and have a photo taken where you can dress up as a Sedgwick County Fire District firefighter, a sheriff's officer recruit, a lab technician or a scientist from the Regional Forensic Science Center, or a couple of favorite zoo animals from the Sedgwick County Zoo. Be sure to use hashtags that are located right next to the social media booth as well, so you can tag us on social media to share that. Then this after, after all of that fun, we will be having a ceremony honoring our first responders, and that will be at the Kennedy Stage just before the Less Than Jake Concert, so it'll go on about 8:30. If you can't meet us this afternoon at all, feel free to check us out Saturday, we will be over at the Red Guard Plaza from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. And with that, commissioners, you've got a very busy schedule this morning, so I won't keep you much longer.
Okay, well, thank you, Kate, thank you for that introduction. And we want to welcome everyone who's here in our meeting today, and those who are watching by way of television. And with that, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, June 7th, 2017. Madam Clerk, first item.
invocation, to be led by Dr. Michael O'Donnell, Grace Baptist Church, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Good morning, Father, we thank you so much for this day you've given us. We join with the Psalmist when he said, "This is the day the Lord has made, we will rejoice and be glad in it." We certainly have reason to rejoice because this wonderful world you've given us, Lord, you've given us so many wonderful gifts of sight and hearing and taste and touch. Lord, you've given us the opportunity to share our lives with others and to be a community. And we thank you for this community, Lord, it's such a blessing to live and minister and work here in Sedgwick County. Lord, we rejoice in so many great things. However, we also read the news and read of the problems in Paris and London and the different things that are going on around our world, and we are saddened. We're saddened because these things are not how you want it to be, and so we pray that you will enable us to be vigilant. Lord, we thank you for the workers of Sedgwick County, those who do so well to provide for us, the sheriff's officers, the firefighters, the EMS. Lord, those folks are those first responders who come at times of distress, and we thank you for them and pray you'll bless them and their families. Lord, we also are saddened at times where children are taken out of the home, and we reach out and have special care for them as well. Lord, we pray for these commissioners today, they have a tremendous responsibility of caring for our community, to be good stewards of the resources we have, to listen to the needs and the ideas from our community leaders, to help manage and, and work with our tremendous workers who head the different departments. So I pray, Lord, today, that you will bless them. Lord, we thank you that we can celebrate as a community with the River Festival, Lord, and so many thousands of people coming together, enjoying one another, and so we pray that as we continue that through this week, that we'll have an opportunity to be a help and encouragement to others. And Lord, while we certainly are grateful for all those who work in government and those who serve us, Lord, help all of us to remember that we have the responsibility to care for others. Give us the desire and the acknowledgement when we have the opportunity to give a smile, maybe give a little bit of help and encouragement, hands up, whatever we can do to be a productive member of this community and a good steward of all the grace you've given us. So be with this meeting today, and we ask these things in your holy name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend O'Donnell, thank you for being with us this morning, appreciate it. Next item?
Roll call, Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Ranza?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Present.
Chairman Enrew?
Present. And next item?
Public agenda.
We have two persons signed up for public agenda, one person I think will be speaking on an agenda item, so we'll hold that. We have another individual wants to speak on floodwater. Is that right? Would you want to step to the podium? And if you just states your name, we appreciate it, and you have five minutes.
I'm the other, Brighton Bach in Sedgwick County, Jim. Anyway, I've been doing floodwater since February of 1941, when I was six years old. I pointed out the location for the dam above Andale that has saved Andale some floods for, since 1963. Anyway, the flooding situation has gotten worse, and the things that the county has done has not helped a thing. Give you a little easy example was, on about 5:00 on Saturday in July last year, I got caught out in the rain at 55th Street South and Oliver. And I lived in West Wichita, and I was trying to figure out where to go home. And so I thought, gee, they have redone Oliver as a 55th Street to Boeing, and that would be the easiest place to go. There's a new fire station there and all that kind of stuff. I mean to tell you, there was three foot of water going over the road of that newly engineered road. Unbelievable. Anyway, back in the, at the '98 flood where the lady died up at 125th and North Broadway, the answer was put in a new bridge, new bigger bridge on Seneca near 125th. This summer, water went over the road on North Broadway, north of 125th, went over the road at 125th, going east and west of Broadway, and went over the road by the new bridge. It's obviously somebody needs to put a conservation dam or two or three or four or five on just their lake, just their creek, excuse me. That would save, you know, a lot of flooding in the whole area. Anyway, in the 2014 Farm Bill, they had provisions for agriculture and floodwaters and those kind of things, and senators from Oklahoma got, the minute President Obama signed the bill, he had about $250 million in projects ready to go to put underneath the Secretary of Agriculture's notes. Six months afterwards, Salina and Saline County came up with their own projects. We didn't come up with any. Back in the day, Sedgwick turned, City of Sedgwick turned down being in the big ditch. And so, from the north of Valley Center to 125th Street, that has been the abyss since the big ditch was built. There's all kinds of things that could be done in that abyss area to reduce the flooding and so forth, downstream and so on. Anyway, in the summer of 65, oh God, this past summer, the lady that lives at the last house on Grove on 63rd Street said there was a big audience standing on the big ditch to see whether it was going to wash out or the water was going to go over the top. She says it was lapping. She says, "My husband was down at the bridge, Ark River Bridge on 63rd Street, and it was up underneath the girders. That's how high the water." Anyway, our lovable big ditch Mitch always said, you know, "The last high watermark is where you set the stake, and you do your work during it." And as far as I'm concerned, last summer, it reached that mark, you know, the big ditch is overwhelmed right now. More water than it can handle in a big rain. Thank you much.
Thank you, Mr. Brighton Bach. Appreciate your comments, and would just say that we do have a Stormwater Advisory Board that's been rejuvenated its activity right now, and they'll be discussing some of these issues.
Well, along that line, the $300,000 that could be in the budget?
I beg your pardon?
The $300,000 that could be in the budget for studies, you know, you guys can go driving around and look and see, Valley Center got a new flood maps, and there's a lot more people on flood insurance than there was before December of 16. But that $300,000 needs to be saved because the Corps of Engineers over in El Dorado has to approve everything, and that will go a long ways in documenting what you were doing.
Well, thank you very much, appreciate your comments. Madam Clerk, next item?
Consideration of minutes, item A, regular meeting minutes of May 3rd.
Commissioners, you've had the opportunity to review the minutes of May 3rd, any additions or corrections?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the meeting minutes from May 3rd.
Thank you, and we have a second. Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enrew?
Aye. Next item, please?
Appointments, item B, resolution appointing Commissioner Dennis to the Lake Apton Public Observatory Board of Trustees.
Mr. Chairman, Area County Counselor, item B is a resolution appointing Commissioner Dennis to the Lake Apton Public Observatory Board of Trustees. That position, of course, had been held by Commissioner Peter John. Commissioner Dennis would be serving until he either resigned from that board or until he left office. I understand there's no need to swear in Commissioner Dennis again, and I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Thank you. Well, I would move that we adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion and a second, Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enrew?
Aye. And Commissioner Dennis does not need to be sworn?
Does not need to be sworn.
Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Item C, resolution reappointing Sanford Alexander to the Wichita-Sedgwick County Access Advisory Board.
Mr. Chairman, items C and D pertain to the Sedgwick County Access Advisory Board. The first resolution, item C, is a resolution reappointing Sanford Alexander to that board. Mr. Alexander had been serving, and his term expired on April 30th of this year. Commissioner Enrew is recommending that he be reappointed for a new term that would end May 31st of 2019. I understand he will not be present. And then item D, is a resolution reappointing Stephen Walters to that same board. He has been serving as an appointee of Commissioner Skelton, but his term expired April 30th of 2016. Commissioner Howell is recommending that he be reappointed for a new term ending May 31st, 2019, and I understand he is present to be sworn. I would urge adoption of both these resolutions.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, I would like to make the motion this morning, we would make these two appointments, appointing Sanford Alexander as well as Stephen Walters to the Sedgwick County Access Advisory Board.
And I will second. Madam Clerk, would you call a vote, please?
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enrew?
Aye. And is Mr. Walters present?
All right. Ready, we'll swear this and just do it at the end, okay? All right. I do solemnly swear that I'll support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge duties of the Office of Wichita-Sedgwick County Access Advisory Board, so help me God.
I do.
Congratulations. Would you like to say anything to the commissioners?
I would like to take this time now to say thank you to Commissioner Howell for reappointing me to the Sedgwick, Wichita-Sedgwick County Accessibility Board. Since I've been on the board, I've been able to help make very important decisions affecting people with disabilities, and it's been an honor to work with Chairman Calvert here, and it's been a great experience, and I would advise people, if you get a chance to serve on a board, I would encourage you to please step up and serve on a board if you are asked by your county commissioner.
Well, thank you, we have a comment from Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, just wanted to say a couple of things. I have never had the privilege of meeting Stephen Walters until today, but I did talk to him on the phone and talked to some other folks about him, wanted to make sure he was a good appointment, and I've heard that he's done a tremendous job, he's faithful, he works really hard, he cares greatly about the topic, and so he is a very good appointment. I want to say, I want to thank you for your service to the county. As well, I want to just mention that he did compete this last weekend on a Special Olympics competition here, and took home a number of prizes and ribbons and trophies or whatever, I'm not sure exactly what all you got, but you got quite a lot of stuff there, and you still plan on, I think, doing a competition out of state, I believe, next year, is that correct, Stephen?
Yes.
All right, I think he plans on going to Seattle, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, and he's in the process of trying to raise some money, so if anybody's interested in, in helping him get there, that would be something that you could consider doing. I wanted to say thank you once again for your service to the county, thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Madam Clerk, next item?
Item E, resolution appointing George Theo Harris to the Sedgwick County Animal Care Advisory Board to fill the unexpired term of Sandra Grietz.
All right, Mr. Chairman, item E is a resolution appointing Mr. Theo Harris to the Animal Care Advisory Board. It is to fill the unexpired term of Sandra Grietz, who resigned. Commissioner Howell is recommending that Mr. Theo Harris be appointed to fill that term, which would end March 21st of 2019. I'm told that Mr. Theo Harris is present to be sworn in, and I would urge adoption of the resolution.
Pleasure, Howell. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to say thank you to Sandra Grietz, she does work in our Sedgwick County Election Office, and I really appreciate her service, she's done a tremendous job, she cares deeply about the topic of animal care. Unfortunately, she's been so busy with her job, we've, I think we have five or six elections this year so far planned, and so she's been tremendously busy, and she feels like this would be appropriate for her to let someone else that has perhaps a different opportunity to, to serve there. So I also want to say, I've known George Theo Harris for a number of years, he is a tremendous individual, cares deeply about a lot of topics, but this is one of those things that he, he has really expressed a great desire to get involved in, and has been working with the city already on, on their animal control board, although he's, I don't think he's, I don't think he's a member of that board, but he has been attending that and talking to the folks over there on these topics for a number of years. So I just want to say I appreciate him, I think he's a good appointment, I'd urge your adoption. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm making the motion that we would appoint George Theo Harris to this board.
Thank you, and I will second. Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enrew?
Aye. And Mr. Theo Harris, if you'd like to step to the podium, and Clerk Kelly Arnold will swear you in.
I do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Animal Care Advisory Board, so help me God.
I do, there's no kiss or anything.
Not, not, different ceremony, different ceremony. He'd like to say thank you or anything.
When, when Jim, first, Sedgwick County Commissioners and Commissioner, when Jim Howell first met me, he didn't really know me that well, and he actually offered me a position on Metropolitan Area Planning Commission, which is 13 syllables, I wish we'd go with MAP-C, they actually deal with MAPS, it's two syllables, so I'm still working on that. But he offered me that, and he actually offered me something on the Airport Authority, which are probably the two most prestigious boards for citizens. But after he got to know me, he kicked me to the dogs, so, so this is the best I could get now. But it wasn't, he interrogated me pretty good, because he asked me all about dogs, though I knew what a dog was, I said it had four, four legs, and if the good ones have a tail wagging and they'll lick you to death, and he said, "All right, I think you're a fit." So, but yeah, I just wanted to say that I'll do a good job on this board, and I'm really concerned that we try to get the city and county together on some fines and stuff, and so we can make sure that we're, we're okay with the dogs. Tom Stoltz, I get extra points if I mention his name, so, but thank you.
We have a comment from Commissioner Howell.
I can't let that go. The reality is, I think George knows what the inside of a doghouse looks like, so, he is the right appointment for this board, I think that he'll do a great job, and really, if you all don't know George, he's actually a good friend as well, he cares about a lot of stuff, and he's passionate, he's a nice guy, he's a fun guy to get, to get to know, he's, he's just a tremendous individual, so I'm so glad that you're willing to do this, George, finally, after two years of begging, I finally got you on a board, so appreciate your service to the county, thank you.
And I can't be on the animal control cities, because you only can be on one board, and I'm already on the bicycle and pedestrian board, so I'm the reason why you guys see all those lines and stuff, so you can blame me for that, too, but, so, but I've been to every animal control, the only person that's been to every board for the, for the city, and I plan on having good attendance at the, at the county, too, so, Tom Stoltz, thank you.
Again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item F, resolution appointing Clifford Helms to the Sedgwick County Nuisance Appeals Board.
Mr. Chairman, item F is a resolution reappointing Mr. Clifford Helms to the Nuisance Appeals Board. He has been serving and had been serving as appointee of Commissioner Skelton, but his term expired March 18th of this year. Commissioner Howell is recommending that he be reappointed for a new term that would expire on June 6th of 2020. I understand Mr. Helms is present to be sworn, and I would urge adoption of this resolution.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, just want to say once again, say some nice things here, because, you know, Clifford is one of the nicest people I know, he'll do anything for you if you ask him, and I think he doesn't know how to, how to say no to people when they ask, and so he's been very graciously serving the county for a long time. This board unfortunately hasn't been, or should say fortunately, as soon as I even want to look at this, they've not been doing a lot of meetings lately, but I think it's an important board, and I guess we're gonna, we're gonna look at, I guess, what their, what their purpose is and try to make sure that they're, they're doing things that are affecting our community, but I had a great conversation with Clifford about this board just recently, and I want to say thank you once again for stepping up and serving, you do, he does a lot of things in the community, he's involved in all kinds of community events and helping people in all kinds of ways, he's, he's out there to help in hands, a great organization that helps many people in our community that are disadvantaged or need help, and I just know Clifford is just a tremendous individual, he's a good friend, and I appreciate your service to the county. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, we would appoint Clifford Helms to the Sedgwick County Nuisance Appeals Board.
Thank you, and I will second. And Madam Clerk, would you call a vote, please?
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enrew?
Aye. And Mr. Helms is here, to be sworn in by County Clerk.
I do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Nuisance Appeals Board, so help me God. Okay, congratulations.
There's a lot of, I think, a lot of opportunity on the nuisance board. It's been rather inactive for the last few years. I do hope that the county commissioners will look at that, see if there's some improvement that can be made, I think there should be. As we see more and more five-acre tracts coming out in the surrounding area, up against farmers and so forth, sometimes there's conflicts. Sometimes those conflicts might include an auto shop or something like that that might be a nuisance to somebody else. Those kind of things need to be addressed, and hopefully we can do that, and I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir, for your willingness to serve. Madam Clerk, next item?
Item G, resolution appointing Tony Martinez to the Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Committee.
Mr. Chairman, item G is a resolution reappointing Mr. Martinez to that Solid Waste Management Committee, position 12. He had been serving as appointee of Commissioner Norton, but he'll be going off that committee. Commissioner Michael O'Donnell is recommending that Mr. Martinez be reappointed for a term that would expire December 31st of 2018. I understand he is not present, but I would urge adoption of the resolution.
Thank you, I move that we adopt the resolution.
Thank you, and I will second. Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enrew?
Aye. And next item, please?
New business, item H, report of the Wichita-Sedgwick County Access Advisory Board.
And Mr. Calvert's with us this morning, and he wants to make some comments, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, as you know, I chair the Wichita-Sedgwick County Access Advisory Board and have for ever, it seems. We have taken a look at some of the people that have helped us and decided that it was time to recognize the city and the, and the county for the help that we have been receiving. We've adopted a resolution, and I would like to read that resolution, if I may. Whereas the City of Wichita and Sedgwick County have been proactive in building and maintaining a good working relationship with the Wichita-Sedgwick County Access Advisory Board, striving for over 10 years toward full implementation of the Americans with Disabilities Act to the benefit of all residents of Sedgwick County. And whereas the City of Wichita and Sedgwick County have conducted a self-evaluation and created Sedgwick transition plans to implement significant access to programs and facilities in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. Whereas the ADA coordinators, other public employees and their predecessors for both governmental agencies have been active members of the Wichita-Sedgwick County Access Advisory Board. And whereas the City of Wichita and Sedgwick County have demonstrated their full commitment to providing access to all city and county programs and facilities, to people with disabilities, and to being in full compliance under the Americans with Disabilities Act. And whereas the City of Wichita and Sedgwick County, with the assistance and leadership of their respective ADA coordinators and employees, have often gone above and beyond the requirements of the ADA in providing collaborative access to programs and facilities. Now therefore be it resolved by the Wichita-Sedgwick County Access Advisory Board that the board hereby publicly expresses its appreciation for their extraordinary service. Two, John D'Angelo, who's manager of the City of Wichita's Arts and Cultural Services Division, Brian Kuhn, the ADA coordinator for the City of Wichita, Megway Karugue, Associate Engineer, City of Wichita, Chrissy McGee, ADA coordinator of Sedgwick County, Ellen House, the ADA coordinator for the 18th Judicial District, Steve Spade, the Wichita Transit Director, Jay Henkel, Deputy City Attorney, Patricia Parker, Assistant County Counselor, Lorraine Showalter-Air, Sedgwick County Budget Director, and all of the other public employees of the city and county, who are too numerous to list. We adopted this on the 24th day of May of 2017. On a personal note, I would like to acknowledge the county employee who kind of was the spark that started this, Bill Buchanan. When he and I met, I made a couple of suggestions, and he said, "Okay," and the county commission backed him up, and things really started to happen a few years backed him up, and things really started to happen a few years ago. I would also like to acknowledge and thank the commission and the county manager for their support by signing interns, those nameless people who come and help us during their term. Their help has been invaluable and has made it possible for me to try to make a living on one hand and for them to run the board. So we appreciate that, and thank you very much. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Calvert. We appreciate your comments, and we are appreciative of your proclamation on, you know, recognizing counties' involvement with you. But I think for folks who are involved in some of these Americans for Disabilities activities and making our community more accessible, people who know, know that you've had a tremendous position of leadership in that and have really moved the ball and caused a lot of things to happen. And in the doing of that, you've also been a very good partner. And so we want to express our appreciation for your leadership and for the progress that you've made, and for being a good example for what it means for the private sector and the public sector to work together to achieve things for the betterment of our community. So we want to thank you for your leadership.
Thank you very much. You know, we serve on behalf of the 20% of people in this county who are classified as people with disabilities. And we also serve for the 80% left, who will be persons with disabilities if they live long enough. So I guess that covers about 100% of us.
That's about 100%. And at my age, I know what you mean. But anyway, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
David, we appreciate it. Commissioners, I would move that we receive and file.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Enry.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item I, Contract for a Household Hazardous Waste Remote Collection Event on June 10th, 2017.
Good morning, Commissioners. Susan Erlinwine, Director of Environmental Resources. We received many calls from residents on how can I get rid of unused household hazardous waste. This includes used oil, gasoline has been mixed with water, pesticides, herbicides, cleaners under the sink, materials that they really don't have a use for anymore. So what we have is a facility at 801 Stillwell where people can bring this material for proper and free disposal. That facility is located at 801 Stillwell and is open Tuesday through Friday, 9 to 5, Saturdays, 9 to 3. But in order to better serve our community, we also offer remote collection events. Our next event is this Saturday, June 10th, at the Textron Beach Craft Campus. The location is at Parking Lot E, which is on the south side of Central, about halfway between Webb Road and Greenwich Road. So we encourage anyone who has household hazardous waste they want to get rid of to come to that event this Saturday from 9 to 1, drop off the material. There will also be testing, if people want to, to have their exhaust tested from the car. And that's a free service provided by the City Environmental Health Department. So that's a joint effort going on at this remote event this Saturday. Textron has approved the contract. That's before you. I'd recommend that you approve it and ask the chairman to sign. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you. Commissioners, any questions? This is something that you've kind of made over the last several years a routine activity that's a great benefit to our community. And moving it around to different locations, I think, is especially convenient and helpful for folks to take advantage of it. So thank you for your leadership on that.
Thank you.
And with that, Commissioners, I would move that we approve the contract.
Well, I will second that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one question. I know that we're getting ready to do one of these in Derby. That's coming up, I believe. I'm not sure of the date.
24th.
June 24th? That's right. And on that event, you did say you needed some volunteers. I was curious, do you need volunteers at each one of these events?
Yes, we get volunteers. Each time I do this, I ask the people who are sponsoring it if they have some available. If not, I'll find them.
I was just curious, so you have volunteers lined up for this event, or are you still looking for anybody?
No, got volunteers for this one.
All right. And I just want to say, I guess if anybody's interested in volunteering for the Derby event, I'd like to talk to you. So please give me a call. It's again, I think the June 24th event, not to confuse anybody about this one, but I know that's coming up. I'm looking for, I believe, six or maybe six or seven or eight volunteers would like to help out from 9 to 1 on that date.
In fact, we've got three Saturdays in a row now. I'll be back next Wednesday talking about the next two.
Anyway, I just think it's a great way for people to serve for one day if they want to do something like that. So thank you. I just wanted to make that point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Enry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Next item, please.
Item J, a county zone change from single-family residential district to limited commercial district on property at the northwest corner of East 63rd Street South and South Clifton Avenue.
Dale Miller, Planning Staff. As you can see here, this property is located on the northwest corner of 63rd and Clifton. It is currently zoned SF-20, single-family, which means it has a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet and is primarily restricted to residential uses. The applicant has requested limited commercial zoning. And their primary focus is that they believe that this undeveloped part of town, or the county, will ultimately be developing, and they'd like to get their zoning in place before there are additional residences in place so that people would know where the commercial corner would be. The land to the north is vacant. There's vacant land to the west. There is a house right here. There is also a house right here. That is, that's why there's a notch in the application area. It is not owned by the applicant. To the south, there's a developing subdivision with duplexes. And then to the east is a farm field. The Comprehensory Plan recommends this area be appropriate for parkland, primarily because most of this area is impacted by the floodway fringe. It is developable by filling the area and matching the elevation for flood heights. And so with that, I try and answer questions. MAPC approved it unanimously. There was no protest. In fact, I believe MAPC approved it on a consent agenda, 12 to 0.
All right. Thank you, Dale. Commissioners, are there any comment or questions? I don't see any. So this is not a public hearing, but on zone changes, we'd like to ask if there's any public comment or input that anyone would like to make. So if you have an interest in this piece of property and want to make a comment, now is your time. I see no one rising to speak, so we'll just restrict comments to the bench. And Commissioner Howell?
Mr. Chairman, I don't really have any questions, but this is in my district, and I'm familiar with the area. The area that's subdivision across the street that's developing, I believe it's really in construction right now. There's really virtually no one living in that area right now. Maybe, maybe one, maybe one or two at the very west end of that perhaps that may be occupied at this point. But it looks like those are all probably rentals, I'm guessing. I don't know. I think it looks like, I'm going to guess those are rentals, but I'm not sure. But nevertheless, I don't have a problem with this. I think this is probably a good idea to, it seems like a reasonable request. And so with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we would approve the zone change, subject to the conditions recommended by MAPC, and adopt the findings of MAPC, and offer as the chairman to sign, prepare a resolution.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve this recommended action. Is there any further comment or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Enry.
Aye. Thank you, Dale. Next item, please.
Item K, consideration of a grant in the amount of $3,51,441 for the Kansas Department of Corrections Juvenile Services, state fiscal year 2018 funding.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Steve Stonehouse, Deputy Director for the Division of Corrections. This morning, I'm here to present for your approval the state fiscal year 18 juvenile grant application to the Kansas Department of Corrections. The grant funding provides juvenile justice programming to prevent and address delinquency. The application before you includes funding for one prevention program, one immediate intervention program, and three mandatory graduated sanction programs. The Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board approved the grant application on May 5th, 2017. We received a planning allocation for state fiscal year 2018 of $3,51,441. It's a planning allocation since the legislature has not finished their work. So if there are any changes, we would be back to inform you of that. But right now, this is what the Department of Corrections is anticipating for us. The funding recommendations for prevention includes the Detention Advocacy Services Program totaling $167,327. The Detention Advocacy Service Program provides attorney services to juveniles at detention hearings and a case management alternative program to facilitate release from detention pending further court action. This program is provided by Kansas Legal Services and serves over 400 youth annually. The intermediate intervention program is a new Senate Bill 367 mandated program that provides immediate interventions in a prefiled diversion-type program. The new program will be operated within the current GIAC program, and the recommended funding amount is $171,020. The remainder of the funding application is for the state mandated graduated sanctions programs. These programs are operated by the Department of Corrections and include the Juvenile Entake and Assessment Center, Juvenile Intensive Supervision, and Juvenile Case Management. GIAC is the first contact many youth have with the juvenile justice system in Sedgwick County. GIAC strives to assist youth from getting more deeply involved in the juvenile justice system by providing effective assessment and referral services 24 hours a day. Annually, GIAC serves about 2,500 youth, with 59% of those youth accepting referrals for services. Juvenile Intensive Supervision serves high and moderate-risk youth placed on probation living in the community. Annually, this program serves about 300 clients with a 63% success rate. Juvenile Case Management serves high and moderate-risk youth placed in the custody of the Kansas Department of Corrections. These youth may be in a YRC-2, in a juvenile correctional facility, or at home receiving aftercare services. Annually, this program serves over 400 youth with a 76% success rate. The recommended funding for these graduated programs, these three programs are, is $2,713,094. The state fiscal year 18 grant application sustains current programming while adding the new IIP program. No new FTEs are being requested in this grant application, and there are no grant match requirements. I request your approval to submit this application, and if awarded, accept the state fiscal year 18 grant application. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. We have been briefed on this item. And Commissioners, are there any further questions? Steve? I don't see anyone asking to speak, so what is the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman moved that we approve the application to the grant, and if awarded, authorize acceptance of the grant. The establishment of budget authority is provided by the financial consideration selection of this request.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Mr. Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Enry.
Aye.
Thank you.
Steve, thank you very much. Next item, please.
Item L, Report to the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting of June 1st to 2017.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Krista McGovern, Senior Buyer for the Division of Purchasing. The meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts for June 1st, 2017 results in nine items for your consideration. Item number one, installation of ice shields on radio towers for emergency communications. The recommendation is to accept the quote from Hayden Tower Service Incorporated in the amount of $98,550. Item number two, 2017 Nova Chip R175B for Public Works. The recommendation is to accept the low bid from Cornejo and Sons LLC in the amount of $4,41,228.09. Item number three, storm drainage cleaning for Public Works. The recommendation is to accept the overall low bid from Mayor Specialty Services LLC at the rates listed above and establish contract pricing for one year with three one-year options to renew. Item number four, CQS-1F emulsified oil for Public Works. The recommendation is to accept the low bid from Ergon Asphalt and Emulsions Incorporated for initial purchase in the amount of $70,800 and establish contract pricing for one year with two one-year options to renew. Item number five is electronic medical records software for Division of Health and Human Services. The recommendation is to accept the low proposal from Go Beyond LLC for a total of five, for a total five-year cost of $47,500 and establish contract pricing as listed for any additional consulting, customization, and onsite training. Item number six is life, accidental death, and dismemberment independent life insurance for Division of Human Services. The recommendation is to accept the proposal from Advanced Life Insurance Company of Kansas, DBA Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Kansas. Option two for life AD&amp;D coverage, and option one for dependent coverage and establish contract pricing at the rates listed above for five years. Item number seven is Employee Assistance Program Services, Division of Human Resources. The recommendation is to accept the proposal from MPAC Inc. at the rates listed above and establish a three-year contract with two one-year options to renew. And item number eight, Pharmacy Services, Division of Corrections. The recommendation is to accept the proposal from Genoa Healthcare Company LLC and establish contract pricing for three years with two one-year options to renew. And finally, item number nine, Groundskeeping Landscaping for various county departments. The recommendation is to accept the low responsive bid from Commercial Lawn Management of Wichita at the rates listed above and establish contract pricing for three years with two one-year options to renew. I'll be happy to try and answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of all items.
All right, thank you. That was quite a list, a variety of items. So Commissioners, do you have comment or questions or need for clarification? Commissioner Howell?
Just a quick question. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the item number two, this might be a question for our Public Works Director, David Spears, potentially, but $4 million for 87 miles of half-inch overlay. Is that what I'm reading?
David Spears, Assistant County Manager, Public Works. Yes, that's correct.
And curious-
It's called Nova Chip. It's one of our preventive maintenance products. It's probably our favorite product, which has really served us well over the years.
I just wanted to, I guess, comment. That's a lot of, that's a lot of miles, and that seems like a tremendously big project to do 87 miles of half-inch overlay. And is this one of those things where they actually remove some of the asphalt? Or they just put this on top of what happens to be there? How's that work?
This product is a little over a half-inch thick of coarse-grated materials put down with what's called a spray paver machine. And it'll last, we've had this last before up to nine years on certain locations, depending on the amount of traffic, type of traffic. But in general, it'll last at least six. We're going on to a six-year program now. We're very happy with, I will tell you this, that the price this year is less than the price we had last year, which we're very happy about, per ton. In '16, it was $77 a ton, and this year it's $70.75 a ton. So we're pretty happy about it.
All right. Well, thank you for those answers. I appreciate that. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we would approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enrich?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, we had lots of folks here to support this item, and they're beating a hasty retreat. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent Agenda.
Commissioners, Mike Scholes, County Manager, recommend you approve Consent Agenda Items. Mike, through Alpha Lima.
Thank you. Commissioner Ranzau?
Mr. Chairman, I believe we accept the, approve the Consent Agenda with the exception of item Alpha Charlie.
There's a motion to approve the Consent Agenda with the exception of item AC.
I'll second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enrich?
Aye.
And now there is discussion for item AC. Commissioner Ranzau, would you just want to make some comments?
Well, yeah, this is about another courthouse police officer. I'm not, based on the information I've been given, I'm not convinced we've done everything we could do to avoid this additional expense. I've been told that the driving factors are, are, one, a new computer program that the Supreme Court wants in place, and somehow was requiring us to move some people around and, and change how we're doing business down here, and also a move done by the District Court down here in conjunction that I don't believe was, I've been told was coordinated with us, and so, you know, we've got a lot of requests here. I'm not convinced that we need another courthouse police to do this. I'd like to see, try to avoid that, whether on our side or the District Court's side, or perhaps empower the state who pays for employees for the District Court to, to hire and fund that position themselves, since they've created this situation. And so, I'm just not, particular sense, we're going through budget, and I know the District Court has put in, I think, several hundred thousand dollars of requests for additional funding, and every dollar we spend on personnel that are, like this, is that much less that we can spend on other stuff, include things that may be a higher priority. So that's just where I'm at, so I won't be supportive of this, I think we need to, price them all, but, okay, I recognize I may be in the minority on this, so.
Well, thank you for your comments. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With this additional courthouse officer, and I wasn't on the commission when we, when the commission approved to have courthouse gunlockers, but I'm under the understanding and the impression from the manager that part of this courthouse officer is going to be in response to the gunlockers that the last commission approved, and I believe that Commissioner Ranzau was supportive of. Is that, is that correct, Mr. Manager?
Mike Scholes, County Manager. This is actually, this is, if you remember, we had pushed forward about eight months ago, the request for four additional, and we've worked it and been able to do some, some good management decisions in terms of how we're going to use them, and we've whittled it down to where this one person is going to do multiple functions. But Judge Fleetwood did come to me about six months ago, maybe less, and talked to me in detail about the need for another courthouse policeman. Since we have so many requirements, you know, his request, and based off of our analysis of what his request was, it is going to take another police officer, but we feel like that one police officer can wear many hats. We've got a lot of things going on, the gunlockers is just another additional duty that this one courthouse police officer would do. So this courthouse police officer is going to wear multiple hats, and we're going to use him as efficiently as we can. It's actually a savings of money, otherwise we would still need the four police officers we had talked about, because we do have a lot of requirements. If you remember the budget last year, and as you've seen the budget workshop this year, public safety continues to, to continue to gradually escalate the requirements and services that we provide to not only 18th District Court, but the sheriff, all aspects of, you know, public safety. So you're, you're going to see that, you know, in, in all the services in lines with that particular function grow. And in this case, this is what, is accentuating the need to get this one extra police officer. So I'm supportive of, he's going to be wearing multiple hats, and I think it's a good use of, of dollars.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions. At the bottom of the page here on, in the briefing book here, it talks about additional budget authority, $26,460 is a request from the operating reserve to pay for the salary and benefits for 2017, but what's the cost for, I assume this position is going to change our staffing table, and this will be an ongoing cost going forward. What's the, what's the future cost for per year to add this position? Salary and benefits?
Well, I'll get that information for you, Commissioner, and provide it for you.
Again, I, I appreciate the fact this person is going to have multi-tasks, but I would like to, to say that it was my intention from the very beginning, these gunlockers would be self-service, they would not require any staff. It was a, you know, what, what seems like a very simple thing, adding gunlockers. We actually already owned the lockers, I guess, at some point, so I don't think there was actually an expense to purchase lockers because they were, maybe I'm wrong about that, I'm not sure where the lockers came from, but, but, but there's been a cost about trying to make the aesthetics of the enclosure and try to create a safety zone around that, which I think is a good thing to do, and I think that's the right way to handle this, but, but that got to be expensive because trying to make it match the existing architecture of the, of the lobby. So again, what seems to be a small thing, provide a place where people store their firearms as they come and go to the courthouse, is, that continues to add expenses. I didn't want to have recurring annual expense tied to gunlockers, and so if there's justification for this position unrelated to the gunlockers, that, that might get my support, but gunlockers alone is not going to get my support. I don't think that's what I envisioned how this would work. For example, at the jail, there are lockers over there, people can put their firearms in them, or cell phones, whatever they want, over there, and there's nobody managing those lockers. They just, you walk into the lobby, and you put whatever you want in that locker, and you, and you do your business at the jail, and when you leave, you pick up your belongings. That's the vision that I would like to see us use here, and it doesn't require staff to do that. If there's justification for this position, independent of the gunlockers, then, then I'm supportive of that, I guess, but some of this seems like there's configurations, like where the courts are located, and we're making decisions to do a lot of things at one time. One of the things I would like to say, say is, I would appreciate if we could stabilize our configuration and assess our needs, and then support the position if that position is still needed. But right now, we're, there's so many things changing, I don't, I don't know that this is the right time to do this. I'm not necessarily against the idea, but I'd like to, I'd like to know from a stable configuration what our needs are, and we're not there yet. So I guess right now, I'm, I'm probably inclined to say, I'd like to wait on this one for a while. I'd like to not approve this at this time and potentially approve it once things are stabilized, we can assess our needs better. That's kind of where I'm at right now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Before I call on Commissioner Ranzau, Mr. Manager, did you want to make a statement?
Yeah, I want to answer your question. It's a, the yearly requirement's $52,940 that's in your material. This year, for this year's budget impacts, it's $26,000. Next year will be the $52,000. But if you remember in my earlier comments, I took a $210,000 requirement, and as a manager, I looked at the management application of what this officer would do, and the gunlockers, it isn't just for the gunlockers. I mean, that is a requirement, but I solved a $210,000 requirement with just this one, which is the $52,000 requirement. And from my vantage point as a manager, I felt it was a good decision.
Thank you. Commissioner Ranzau?
I'll just say I agree with Commissioner Howell. The gunlocker issue should not even be a factor in this, was, the whole gunlocker idea was, it was understood, it doesn't need someone, the intent was never to have anyone monitoring people or cops a factor that way, but the fact that we've done fast pass, which allows more people to get to faster, it should be less cumbersome down there anyway. So I'm just going back on what was briefed on with respect to the courts, and it's troubling that I think there's going to be more, more, more costs associated with this dictate from the Supreme Court on how we do our business down here. Apparently, the hearing through their computer system is what's going to dictate how we do business down here, and whether it's good or bad for us or not, I think the FDA alluded to the possibility of increased, and I guess what's good for us down here, or having us involved in the decision-making process evidently isn't important, as long as we satisfy the requirement of the software program up in Topeka. So that's very troubling as we go forward, and this is just, I think, the tip of the iceberg.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one more follow-up question. What is the current FTE count for the courthouse police? Last number I heard, I think, was 27, is that correct?
About 27.
About 27?
Yeah, I think maybe 27.
Let me just make a point. Again, you know, the jail's a good example of how this could be done. They have a very similar, you know, they have a lobby, they've got lockers, they've got a security guard scanning people, they only have one person managing their lobby, and of course, the number of people coming in and out is very, very low compared to what we have here. But I understand that, talking to the sheriff recently, I think there are over 45 FTEs low right now. They're trying to find people to fill those positions, and so if somebody wants a job, the Sedgwick County Jail is a tremendous place to work. I'd encourage people to check that out. They pay well, and there's benefits, but there's 45 positions open, and they're managing that with existing staff. I guess, again, I don't know if this is an emergent issue. I think that if there is, once we're stabilized, we can use existing staff. If there's 27 other folks doing this job, and they're asking for one, it seems like, pardon me?
26.
26. My, my point is, if there's that many folks in this department, and they, and they need to have one position filled, it's not an emergent, it's not an emergent issue. We can get stabilized and assess our needs and, and, and adjust that to, you know, potentially reduce overtime or whatever, but this is not an emergent need, and to the extent there's configuration changes happening right now, I don't, again, I don't think this is the right time. This is something that can be managed with existing staff, at least initially until things are stable, and we can certainly visit this and support changes as needed, but this is not an emergent issue, and the time to talk about this is during the budget hearing, not necessarily when we're not, we don't have the budget in front of us, we don't know what our other competing, other, other competing items are. This is a little unusual to do it this way. It's, it's as if it's an emergent issue, and I don't think that it is. So again, I don't think this is the right time or the place to do this. Not, not to say there's not a need, but if it's a need, we can certainly address that through normal, normal times and processes and, and the budget that we are dealing with. Parallels to this, between now and then, between now and August, we're, we're doing lots of budget decisions. That's where we should probably take a look at this, and, and again, they're installing that gunlockers right now. I don't know what the schedule is, but we're very close to having a new configuration. Let's just, my opinion is, let's let things stabilize and figure out where we're at, so that's my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. I do believe that the courts have made a very valid argument as to why they need this, and I appreciate Judge Fleetwood for being so willing to work with us on, on the number and being, being willing to share, but, but I, from my research, I understand from the manager and from other conversations that the gunlocker issue was reviewed and that people believe we need to have it staffed, and I wasn't here to vote for that, but, but we can't be shocked that there needs to be staffing for gunlocker issues that was voted on by the last commission last year. There's expense to that, and that should have been studied before, and I think it's unfortunate that some individuals didn't study that issue before, but, but I am supportive of this, and I appreciate the, I appreciate Judge Fleetwood being so willing to work with the commission and negotiating down to a part-time judge, because they could be far more forceful, the District Court could, and far more demanding than they are, and our hands would be tied on that issue, and we would have to provide it ultimately. So the court is being a very, very good partner to the Board of County Commissioners on this particular issue. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ranzau?
Well, let me correct something we said. The issue as far as staffing was, was talked about and discussed previously. There's plenty of staff standards I had and without it, so to say that that wasn't discussed or evaluated is actually incorrect. Beyond that, I don't believe the, the, there's a statute that requires us to provide this training for criminal court, so I don't think, I've been told by Chief Judge, it's only mandated for criminal court, so I'm not so sure how, how much they control this in reality anyway, but nevertheless, I don't think there was any coordination with respect to a lot of the moves and reorganization that brought this up. I want to clarify for the record.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know we've had a lot of discussion on this, I know that we had a motion, I don't know if we ever had a second on the motion.
I don't think we've had a motion.
No, sir, we have not had a motion.
Did you make a motion? No. Oh, you didn't? I just asked him to open the discussion.
Okay. I was just trying to make sure that we were doing this thing legally. If we don't have a motion, then I'd like to make a motion that we approve item Alpha Charlie.
Thank you, I will second. Any further comment, Commissioners?
None.
Okay. Well, before we vote, I'd just like to make a comment that I think this has been researched and analyzed by our manager and personnel staff, and by Daryl Haynes, Chief of the Courthouse Police, by Judge Fleetwood and his staff, and had, they've come to the conclusion that this staff addition is necessary. Actually, I think the conclusion is, from many of them, is that more courthouse police are necessary. But we've come to an agreement that we think that we can use this person very flexibly and try to cover all our bases with just one addition to our staffing table. But the, the Chief of the Courthouse Police has been saying for some time that he needed additional staff, and the District Court has clearly illustrated in my mind their need for this additional security piece in, in their courts, and I believe, as Commissioner O'Donnell said, that Judge Fleetwood and his staff have been very cooperative with us to try to do what, what has to be done, what needs to be done at the least cost possible. So I think the security issue is, is very serious, and the addition of a gunlocker in the lobby, I believe that whether you were for that or against that, most everyone agrees that some additional security in that process is necessary. So I'm going to be supportive of it, and I don't think that this is an out, an out-of-bounds, outrageous request. I think it's normal, and everybody's worked real hard to try to get along in a cooperative way, when you consider that the additional request was for four individuals. So everyone's done a good job to try to keep the cost of doing county business down, and I think this is a necessary addition, so I will be supportive. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I indicated earlier, I was on the fence, basically, regarding whether this is the right time, and all of the reasons given are the right reasons, but there are, I have a desire, if you will, to, to cooperate with the District Court needs as they're presented to us. Obviously, the majority's already spoken in favor of, it's clear this is going to pass, and I do want to be supportive of the District Court to the extent that I possibly can. I just want to say it, this, my opinion, has more to do with other needs, and the need, quote-unquote, the need for this to be tied to the gunlockers in any way, is, in my opinion, is, is, is nothing more than an opinion. Nevertheless, for other reasons, I'd like to be on board of supporting our District Court, so I'll support the motion, but I would like to challenge our, our courthouse police to continue to look for efficiencies and, and make decisions that allow us to not continue to add more and more expenses and staff to this. I think that Sedgwick County does a great job with our security, but I think we are, we, we do spend a tremendous amount of money, and to do this, and I think we, we need to be, we need to be cognizant of the costs that taxpayers are incurring. of the costs that taxpayers are incurring. Some of this maybe, most of it's probably necessary, some of it, maybe we could challenge ourselves to find some efficiencies, and so I'd like to, to continue to find ways to do things more efficiently if possible. Every one of these police officers, I think, has, has very similar training. Perhaps we can find some folks to do parts of what is being done, but may not have the exact same level of training perhaps, as a way to, to reduce some bar costs and that type of thing. So, again, I, I guess I defer to them to make these decisions. I'll support them, but this has more to do with other things and not so much the gun lockers in my mind. And so with that, Mr. Chairman, I guess I'll plan on supporting the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. I appreciate the dialogue on this. I was actually going to second motion if Commissioner Ransow had made one, just for discussion purposes. I don't, I would not have supported it, but I wanted to make sure we were able to discuss the issue. This is an issue that started when we were first sworn in. The chief came up and talked to us, and at that time, I think it was five positions that he was wanting, four or five, and the fact that, that our district judge indicates that there are some concerns about making sure that we have adequate security, that's the reason that I made the motion. First of all, for two reasons. One is so that we could have discussion on, on this issue, and we've been having a, a great deal of discussion, but second of all, I, I believe that the position is warranted.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else wishing to speak? I, I will, I will ask if there's anybody from the audience here or from the public that wants to speak on this issue. I see no one rising to speak, so Madam Clerk, I'll ask you to call the vote, please.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ransow?
Uh, no. You almost got me. I'm so used to saying yes all the time.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enry?
Aye. Thank you. Next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Von Achen, Assistant County Counselor. Obviously, the news of the day was the override of Senate Bill, veto of Senate Bill 30 last night. Although previous versions of the tax bill did include some sales tax, things that would directly affect collections for Sedgwick County, those were stripped from the final version. So really, where we're going to see the impact is when they do the budget bill and the ability to fund, to fund that budget. So, we'll see that in the form of whether or not there's any cuts to our contractual relationships with the state, so, but as far as the direct impact of Senate Bill 30, we won't, we won't necessarily see anything from that. It'll be reflected in budget. We have several items that are kind of in the hopper. The reviser's very busy this time of year because they're, they're working through several different things, and this is day 110 of the legislature. The record, by the way, is 114, so we're getting close. So, we're waiting on Governor's actions on a couple of items. One of those is Senate Bill 21, which affects the working after retirement thing, which will have, which Human Resources will have to look at. We're waiting for, for Governor's action on that. Additionally, we are waiting for Governor's actions on some revisions to the Juvenile Justice Code. This is kind of the, the trailer build to last year's major revisions, so they picked up some additional things, so corrections will be looking at that once Governor takes action on that. The education bill is still pending, which we, we have kept track of that, just to kind of see where it was at. At one point, that was a combination of tax bill and school bill, and they ended up splitting that out because they couldn't get it passed as a combination bill. We do have pending enrollment, some items involving Medicaid reimbursement and for medical transport reimbursement that will affect EMS. That has not yet been enrolled and headed to the Governor, but that will involve the reimbursement that we get from Medicaid for medical transport. It also restores the 4% cut for fiscal year 2017 to Medicaid reimbursement, which will affect directly for us, Concare. And, and one other thing that will affect Concare is Senate Sub for Hospital 2278, which is the concealed carry bill where they extended the exemption for hospitals. That also includes community mental health centers, which, but that would include Concare. There is not an indication yet as to what action the Governor is going to take regarding that bill. He says he is contemplating his action on that one. That's all I have for this morning. Hopefully, the next time we meet, the legislature will be done, because I don't believe we have a meeting until July 5th.
Okay, we can hope. Commissioner Ransow?
I was just asking, could you send us a synopsis of the tax bill of exactly?
Yes, I'll send you, I'll, I'll send you the-
Some of the things that are going to change?
Right. I do, I can send you, I do have the supplemental notes that, the enrolled version hasn't even been posted online yet. It's gone so quick, but it does include, you know, obviously, there's some changes to the tax rates and tax brackets. The LLC exemption is wiped out as beginning January 1st of this year, so those entities will have to figure out their tax obligations for not only the remaining part of the year, but having to go back and figure out what their income tax obligations will be. But I will send you all of that information.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. I don't see anyone with another question, so John, thank you for that report.
Okay, thank you.
Next item. Other? Commissioners, are there other items of community interest that you'd like to bring up at this time? Commissioner O'Donnell?
I know he's not here anymore, but just wanted to thank my dad for coming and offering the prayer today. I didn't get a chance to say that after, but thanks to the manager's officer for putting that together. That was, that was nice. So, thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you. Any other comments? I believe we have a need for an executive session, is that right? So if we could have a motion for that.
Ms. Chair, I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 45 minutes to consider personnel matters of non-elected personnel, preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session no sooner than 11:10, and the executive session is required to protect the privacy interests of an identifiable individual and to protect the county's financial interests and rights to the confidentiality of its negotiating position.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ransow?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enry?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be in the manager's conference room.
In the manager's conference room. All right. Well, we will recess to executive session.
Sedgwick County 911, what is your emergency?
The 911 dispatcher is essential. When I'm en route to a call, they're continuously giving us updates, so I know what's going on before I get to the call. And then when I arrive at the call, sometimes I'm the only person, so they're my eyes and ears when I can't be.
One thing that drew me in the most is I love helping people, and then I started and realized that I love how much we help people, and the excitement every day's different.
911 dispatchers are extremely important to Sedgwick County Department. They're the first ones on scene. They're the ones that have the first contact with our citizens that are having this emergency. They are the ones who notify what units need to go to a particular emergency. They're the ones who tell us how many units need to go. They are a vital success to the outcome of all the calls that we run. We couldn't do that job without them.
I really wanted to be that person after you go through something really traumatic, and you have to call 911, and then you finally get that calm voice, and you're like, okay, it's gonna be okay.
Hectic, but very rewarding, because you never know what's going to happen on that next phone call, whether you're going to be saving a life.
Favorite part about the job is the adrenaline. I love the fast pace when things are getting busy, when we're getting chases, or when we're, you know, really helping someone that I know needs to help.
If you're interested in being the first, first responder, email workfor911@sedgwick.gov or call 660-4977 for more information.
Wichita was built on a flood plain. Early settlers even called the area from hillside to ridge road "swampland." In the 1800s, several large floods hit the area, but it wasn't until after the 1944 flood that left more than 5,000 temporarily homeless, the city started a flood control committee. That's where M.S. Mitch Mitchell, or Big Ditch Mitch, comes into the story. After just 10 days on the job as an office engineer, he was sent out into the field.
They made me wade through about a foot and a half of water. Now, I'm in my office dress and shoes, and they made me wade through the water to, to get to the road where the, where the drive was.
And what started out as a six-week commitment to the project led to a lifelong career with the City County Flood Control Office.
A lot of planning went into how many of those local flooding systems can be incorporated in that particular project, and floodway was the only way to do it.
But convincing everyone it was a good idea was another story.
There was a tremendous amount of objection to the acquisition of right-of-way for that. We don't have any flooding up here, and you're ruining my field, and you're cutting off the highway, and all of those things, that they did not recognize the importance of that diversion.
The design for the Wichita Valley Center floodway was modeled after one Mitchell saw in California.
They were very helpful. They sent us their manuals for construction of the lining, for the maintenance of the lining, how these things should be under-drained systems, so they gave us the design work for what you see on the paved canal now. The main project was the diversion of the Little Arkansas River, some water from the Chisholm Creek system, and some water from the Arkansas River through what became known as the Big Ditch. There were people said, you can't do that. You can't put that Little River water in the Big River. Well, we did.
And that Big Ditch has been his legacy. Tony Giuliano is the Art Director for Sedgwick County. You've probably seen his work, but when he's not designing for the county, he's got his whistle on the soccer pitch.
He looked at me and he said, you're skinny, you're young, you can run, you should ref soccer. And 15 years later, I'm still doing it.
Moving up the ranks.
And it's opened up a lot of doors for me. I ref'd at the local level, and the Juco, and the NAI levels, all the way up to, to Division 1.
Achieving a collegiate-level national badge.
It's exhilarating. I, I, I really enjoy that challenge. I mean, at that level, you're reffing the, the best athletes.
Ref'ing around 60 matches a year.
You'll find a common phrase in the referee community. It's "for the love of the game." Soccer, to a lot of us, is a big part of our lives, whether played it, watch it, or referee it, or all three, and it's giving back to the game.
Something that helps ease the stress of his day job.
It just allows me to challenge, or to accept and really take on any challenge, and a stressful environment at work. It, it kind of is easy, after running six to eight miles in a match and getting yelled at from everybody.
Crediting Sedgwick County for allowing him to pursue both of his passions.
It's a neat honor. I've gotten to travel to do some really high-level games, work with referees across the United States. It's just been a very rewarding second career, if you will.
If you've ever needed a snack while visiting the Sedgwick County Courthouse, you've probably seen Wes Brummer. He and his wife Debbie run the snack zone. Brummer also furnishes all the vending machines in the county. But when he's not keeping us fed, he spends his time writing historical fiction.
I grew up in a family that liked to tell stories. My folks grew up during the Depression.
That's part of what inspired his book, Dust and Roses.
It's basically about a young woman who takes a big fall, and the rest of the story is, is her redeeming herself.
Writing hasn't come without challenges. Brummer was born with severe low vision.
Describing color, that was probably one of my weaknesses in the story. I didn't put enough- I didn't put enough color description.
But that's never stopped him. He sold about 150 copies of Dust and Roses, which can be found in the Snack Zone or on Amazon. And he's working on his second book.
My character is a German prisoner of war that finds himself in Camp Concordia.
He hopes to have it complete by summer of 2018. Habitat for Humanity provides opportunities for families to achieve affordable home ownership.
Without the volunteers, we don't have the hands to reach out to recruit the families. We don't have the hands to go and meet with these families and help them along their journey.
One of those volunteers is Sedgwick County employee Greg Gann.
Next thing you know, I'm on three committees and here it is 10-plus years later and it's just a great fit for me.
Gann serves on the Home Buyers Committee, reviewing applicants and doing onsite home visits.
He is always enthusiastic and excited to introduce families, to tell their story and to talk about not only the challenges that they face, but how they overcame those challenges.
You realize just how difficult it is for families to find clean, safe, affordable housing in good neighborhoods where they can raise their family without much care. These houses are filled with love. It doesn't matter if you don't know which end of a hammer to use. We'll find something that fits your ability and you can participate.
Having volunteers like Greg who are committed, who are willing to give up their time, their talent, their treasure, we can't ask for anything more. It's truly a blessing.
Wow, every day is a great day. I come to the job sites, we go on home visits, we meet. I can't think of a bad day, not once. It's truly been life-changing for me.
If you're hurt, you want help to come fast. That's where these bikes come in.
We're able to fit into places that ambulance can't.
The Sedgwick County EMS Bike Team was started in 2009 with the help of grants and community donations. Crew members must try out to be part of the team.
I love coming down here to River Fest and helping out. I love biking, so just kind of combining two of my loves together.
Then they work in two-person crews. Additional support is provided with this. It's how patients are transported out of the crowd after the bike team provides treatment. It's also proven to be faster and more cost-effective.
Our response times are one-tenth of what they used to be down here and we're using 75% less personnel to get the job done.
And provides a great opportunity for the public.
Just being able to interact with the community, I think, is pretty awesome. They could have come up and asked us a lot more questions. We're a little bit more accessible than we are in the ambulances usually. So we get to see a lot more of the people and hang out with the kids.
It's been a popular spot for people to attend and visit as it continues today.
Celebrating 75 years of fun in the sun.
I think this lake is cemented in its timeframe. It's going to be here for many, many more years to come.
As we were going through the records, we discovered some very interesting things.
The role of the Register of Deeds office is to file and store all real estate documents.
Basically, it's ownership of land and it's very important. And it started in the 1800s.
But that wasn't always the case. Like this depiction of God or these instructions to make a wig.
I think some people just wanted to file them here because it was an opportunity to have it filed officially somewhere. And maybe this for them was the most convenient place.
But it's the history that's the most interesting. These are the first plots of land for Wichita.
This is what the city looked like when it was brand new in 1870.
And the history that made Wichita the air capital of the world. Deeds to the Travel Air Company, started by Beech, Stearman, and Cessna.
These aircraft companies go back a long way. These all started in the 1920s.
There's even a local connection to former President Obama. His grandparents and other family members lived in Wichita in the 60s.
His grandparents moved from Wichita in the 1960s to go to Hawaii where they helped his mother raise him.
And then there's the Wild West. This deed is from Billy the Kid's mother, who ran a company washing soldiers' clothes.
She also dabbled in real estate. So there's several deeds where she's granting property and also where she bought her own property.
Billy the Kid also lived with his mother here in Wichita.
These documents are so important and they're so unique that we want to preserve them. This is just the tip of the iceberg. We have more. We have lots more.
Did you ever wonder how first responders in Sedgwick County find homes in the unincorporated areas of the county? Hi, I'm Bill Hinkle with Sedgwick County Fire District One. Did you know that Sedgwick County Fire District One has a program called RAMP? RAMP stands for Rural Address Marking Program. This is a program that is offered free of charge to all citizens living in the unincorporated areas of Sedgwick County. Through this program, you can visit our website, www.sedgwickcounty.org. From there, go to the Fire District page and find the RAMP form and enter your information. Choose from vertical, horizontal, or diagonal sign that we will produce for you, free of charge. This will be a green sign with a white reflective numbers which helps first responders locate your property from a distance in the event of an emergency. Once the sign is produced, one of our fire crews will come to your location and install the reflective sign for you. This RAMP program helps first responders quickly locate your property in the event of an emergency, cutting down on possible delays and response times due to your address not being visible from the road. All responders in Sedgwick County benefit from this program. These signs can be seen both day and night and during inclement weather. Help us help you in case of an emergency. Post your address for responders to find. Again, this is a free program offered by Sedgwick County Fire District One. For more information, visit our website at www.sedgwickcounty.org or call us at 660-3473. 3473.
All right, we are back from executive session, so I'll call the regular meeting of the Board